Harding, Jerome, Melton, Pauls, Palermo, Festerson. Mr. President.
Here. Would everyone please stand for the pledge of allegiance and remain standing for the invocation?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, to begin sentence my turn and I wanted to, rather than do any kind of invocation today, I just wanted to share a couple of things with you. First of all, this morning, I had the opportunity to welcome a large contingent of individuals who are here from in Omaha, who come from around the country and several places around the world to talk about the issues of lead in our communities. It was really good to be there. It was really good to see how much, how attentive they were and how much they're willing to work to address a significant problem that has faced our community for a while. Second thing I wanted to say is there's a Washington Post reporter in town. He's going to be here for the entire week and part of the reason he's going to be here is because the African-American unemployment rate, as well as the unemployment rate in general, but the African-American employment rate is dropping faster in Omaha than almost any other major city in the country. And they want, the unemployment rate, rather, and he wanted to come and check out why. So, he will be visiting with a number of individuals. When he meets with me, I'm going to be sending him to some of you all, so be prepared. Thank you.
I paid for it.
An affidavit of publication is on file for the pre-council and city council meeting and a current copy of the open meeting act is posted in the white binder on the east wall of the legislative chambers.
Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to this meeting of the Omaha City Council. The council thanks you all for joining us this afternoon. As a courtesy to those in attendance, we would ask you to turn off or mute any of your electronic devices. Madam Clerk.
Item six, an application to consider a Class D liquor license for taco company doing business as taco company located at 6108 Maple Street.
Public hearing on agenda item number six is today proponents please. Name and address for the record please.
Michael Sanchez, 7903 Heritage Circle. Happy to answer any questions the council may have.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, are there any opponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Mr. Festerson.
Thanks, Mr. President. Just a quick word on this one, if you would. So, this is a new restaurant coming to Benson.
Correct.
And it's in the, the old Benson Bank Building, which is a really great historic building that's being renovated as we speak. I wanted to give you a chance to talk about it a little bit. I know it's, in essence, bringing some of Maria's Ralston flavor to Benson, right?
That's correct, yep. You know, family recipes since 1970s. Maria's has meant a lot to the community, the local community of Ralston, but we felt like the, the product is good enough to share outside of Ralston, so we wanted to kind of create a new brand so we can share again that product in a new location and leave Maria's to the community of Ralston.
Yeah, and I'm assured that includes the margaritas, right?
It does.
Okay. And when do you intend to open?
Sometime in June.
That's great. We'll welcome you to Benson and I think it'll be a great addition.
I appreciate that very much.
Yeah, motion approved.
Moving second to approve item six. There are no further lights roll call.
Harding, Jerome, Melton, Pauls, Palermo, Festerson. Mr. President.
Yes.
Item six is approved, seven to zero. Items seven and eight can be considered together. Applications to consider Class D liquor licenses for White Oak Station LLC for the following locations. White Oak Station number 78 located at 8242 Maple Street and White Oak Station number 81 located at 720 North 118th Avenue.
Public hearing on agenda items number seven and eight are today proponents please.
Ryan Shilt, 4911 North 114th Street.
Thank you.
Santino Jerry, same address.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents, and you just hit on answering any questions we might have, correct? Thank you. Are there any other proponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, are there any opponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, public hearing is closed.
Motion approved.
Second, roll call.
Harding, Jerome, Melton, Pauls, Palermo, Festerson. Mr. President.
Yes.
Items seven and eight are approved, seven to zero.
Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Item nine, an application to consider a special designated liquor license for A N S Inc. doing business as 13th Street Brick House located at 2202 South 13th Street for a birthday party at May 19th, 2018 from 7:00 PM to midnight with music until midnight.
Public hearing on agenda item number nine is today proponents please.
My name is Barb Crum, 4910 South 30th Street.
Thank you. Thank you. Are there any other proponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, are there any opponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Moving second to approve item nine, no lights roll call.
Harding, Jerome, Melton, Pauls, Palermo, Festerson. Mr. President.
Yes.
Item nine is approved, seven to zero. Consent agenda. Any member of the city council may cause any item placed on the consent agenda to be removed. Items removed from the consent agenda shall be taken up by the city council immediately following the consent agenda in the order in which they were removed unless otherwise provided by the city council rules of order.
Public hearing on agenda items numbers 10 through 14 were held on April 24th, 2018. Moving second to approve, no, no lights roll call.
Harding, Jerome, Melton, Pauls, Palermo, Festerson. Mr. President.
Yes.
Items 10 through 14 are approved, seven to zero.
The public hearing on agenda items numbers 15 through 35 are today. If you wish to address the city council regarding these items, please come to the microphone, indicate the agenda item number that you wish to address, identify yourself by your name, address, who you represent, and if you are a proponent or an opponent.
Remove 18.
Remove 18. We're removing 18. We are removing item 18 from the agenda, taking that off consent.
Move, is it closed?
Yeah, public hearing is closed.
I'd move 15 to 17, 19 through 35.
Moving second to approve 15 through 17, 19 through 35. There are no lights roll call.
Harding, Jerome, Melton, Pauls, Palermo, Festerson. Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed, seven to zero. Item 18, a resolution to approve the professional services agreement with Lamprey Merson and Associates Inc. to provide professional services on OPW 52281 in the amount of $466,462 for the 78th Street Improvements Project.
Public hearing on agenda item, agenda item number 18 is today proponents please. Seeing none, are there any opponents? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Moving second to approve item 18, no lights roll call.
Harding, Jerome, Melton, Pauls, Palermo, Festerson. Mr. President.
Yes.
Festerson. Councilmember Festerson passed due to potential conflict of interest. Item 18 is approved, six to zero. Item 36, an ordinance approving a real estate purchase agreement with Aura Prince to convey the property located at 3732 North 36th Street and the north 20 feet of 3728 North 36th Street in the amount of $700.
Public hearing on agenda item number 36 is today proponents please. Seeing none, are there any opponents? Seeing none, public hearing is closed, next item.
Item 37, an ordinance to approve an agreement with the Omaha Public Schools for the city to provide up to 11 associate school resource officers and marked police cruisers from the first day of the semester of August 2017 and ending on July 31st, 2019.
Public hearing on agenda item number 37 is today proponents please.
Lieutenant Vivian Buckley, 505 South 50th Street.
Just answer any questions we might have?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, are there any opponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Mr. Pauls.
Thank you, Mr. President. Anytime this item comes in front of the council, it brings me back to days that are good and bad. Several years ago, a fellow administrator of mine was shot and killed in our office here in, in Omaha and I still feel that when I see something like this, and also with all the shooting that's going on throughout our nation, so I just have a couple of questions about this. Is this, as I understand, these are retired officers because they work in the middle schools?
Yes, sir.
And there are 11 of them?
There are currently 16.
In the element, are, in the middle schools?
In the middle schools, yes, sir.
And we're only requesting 11?
No, those are, we're actually not requesting positions, we're just requesting that the salary be, be increased. So, we already have them in place.
Okay. If you have 16 in the middle school, I see 11, I thought I saw 11 here, maybe I'm misreading that.
No, we have 16 in place and then one is at the tech building.
Okay, that's, but I'm.
11 is for OPS, excuse me, 11 is for OPS.
That's, well.
I'm including all the SROs for all the other districts, but 11 for OPS.
Okay, and these are retired officers, they are retired if they're in the middle schools?
Yes, sir.
And within in the high schools, we have police officers who are?
Are sworn and are active.
About how many of those do we have?
16.
Okay. Okay, so, I noticed also here on the hours, like, the ones in the half, in the middle schools, they're there for 28 hours a week.
Yes, sir.
And I'm doing this because I, I think sometimes we are misled. To me, a school day is much more than 20, 28 hours a week.
We do have Rover positions that are also retired officers or ASROs that come in and fill in for the other remaining 40 hours. So, only, ASRO can only work 28 hours a week per contract, so they are, we do have SRO Rovers.
Okay, so in other words, if I would go to a middle school at, at 7:30 in the morning, chances are I would see a, a police officer, a uniformed police officer.
Yes, sir.
That's good to know because when I was reading this, I was really questioning, because there are certain parts of the day that are, I think are more advantageous to enter a building, you know? I know this has nothing to, to do with the police officers, this has more to do with the school administrators, but I did happen to walk into a high school about two weeks ago, the door is propped open in the evening, which I think is, we just have to alert ourselves and we cannot always depend upon the police officer to be the one who's there. We have to be pretty on top of ourselves, administrators, teachers, and our parents. And, and the reason why, I may, you may be thinking I'm belaboring this, but I just think this is such a significant part of our lives now, especially how things are moving in this world. And I, and I do thank you for coming today and being willing to answer some of the questions that I have. Appreciate that.
No problem, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Palermo.
Thank you, President Grant. I just wanted to echo a little bit of Councilman Pauls as far as this, because it is unfortunate the day and age that we live in that we have to look at this and look at it very important because these positions that are here in these schools are, there, there's no cost on them. I mean, there just really isn't, so that's it. Thanks.
Thank you.
There are no more lights, next item.
Item 38, an ordinance to amend Omaha Municipal Code Section 30 and to add a new section 30-36 to amend the system whereby the police department can track stolen goods and to regulate secondhand dealers in order to reduce theft of certain items.
Public hearing on agenda item number 38 is today proponents please.
Good afternoon, council. I'm Todd Schmutter, Chief of Police, City of Omaha, 505 South 15. Want to thank Lieutenant Buckley for answering your school resource questions. On agenda item 38, the Omaha Police Department doesn't get a whole lot of legislative or ordinance help over the years as it relates to property crimes. Not an indictment of anybody, but it's a, you know, there's other priorities out there, especially at the state issue, when prison overcrowding is such a, such a major topic. Property crimes seem to be forgotten. The original ordinance that allows us to track stolen goods has been an ordinance that has benefited the Omaha Police Department, has been one that, that I can say directly impacted the property crime levels in the city of Omaha and is really a benefit to the city of Omaha's police department. So, what we're going to hear today is some of my staff, Lieutenant Dessler is here, Sergeant Tina Genom. Lieutenant Dessler oversees the auto theft unit. Tina Genom oversees the pawn unit. We're the only agency in the state that actually has a pawn unit and that's due to size. You've got half a million population here, you can imagine how busy that pawn unit is. And they spend most of their time tracking down stolen property. So, when the conversation comes about, it may come across like the police want this, the police want that. Really, we are speaking for crime victims out there in an attempt to try to retrieve their property. So, if we could look at it from that perspective, I understand there may be some, some items of contention on, on this particular issue and the police department stands willing to work with all parties involved to see if we can make this happen. Be happy to take any questions.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents who wish to be heard?
Lieutenant Mark Dessler, Omaha Police Department, 505 South 15th Street. As the council knows, Leads Online, which is the company that we contract with to track our goods through the pawn shops, came online here in the city of Omaha in 2016. Since then, we've recovered over $700,000 of stolen property from the shops and have made multiple, multiple arrests and dozens of investigations. Leads Online is a company that's been in business for the past 18 years nationally. There's 2,100 law enforcement agencies across the United States that use Leads Online and there's about 41,000 individual businesses that report to Leads Online. It's a secure organization, they're, they're a trusted law enforcement partner and they have, they have benefited not only us, but, but other law enforcement agencies across the United States. Because of Leads Online, we've been able to recover stolen property that was stolen in Omaha as far away as Texas and with some of the other systems that we had used in the past, there would be no way to recover those types of items. The, the pawn shops have come online and they've been online for a little over a year and a half and we, we have seen a, it's so much easier for us to track property, not only because of the, because of the officers that we have and the amount of stores that they can look at electronically and how quickly they can get it done, but, but it's also just a more thorough, a more thorough inventory system with photographs, serial numbers, fingerprints of the individuals selling the items and also photos of driver's licenses. It makes, it makes our identification of suspects so much easier and so much better. So, I, obviously I'm an advocate for the Leads Online and it needs to be expanded into the secondhand shops, which is what we're trying to do with this ordinance. We think we might be missing a piece of the pie with some of the items being, that could be potentially stolen, being sold at, at some of these secondhand stores and we'd like to be able to, to keep an eye on those items as well and hopefully recover more items for our, for our victims.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents who wish to be heard?
John Deneen with Saul's Jury and Loan, 2505 South 120th Street. I run all six locations we have here in town and over a year ago, when we went to Leads Online, there were definitely some concerns that we had, but we saw in our industry that this was how it was going and it actually made the communication between us and law enforcement very, very good. We were able to get the information to our officers in a more timely fashion. If we had concerns or questions, we could contact them as well and we would go on Leads Online and actually search and see what type of items these people have been bringing in. We feel that definitely not only our stores have benefited from it, but secondhand dealers will also, and I know there's a lot of questions with those, if they do have to go to it, that it will only make your job and business better. And I would extend out our phone number to any other businesses that are against this policy. We would answer any questions that they would have, what we have seen with our customers. If our customers don't care for getting their fingerprints or pictures taken, we haven't seen that at all. And so, if there is anybody that does have questions, we are, feel free to answer anything that anybody does have.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, are there any opponents who wish to be heard?
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
I'm Sean Moore. I'm the Director of Sales at Boerseims and this is Aaron Limas.
I'm the CFO at Boerseims and our business address is 120 Regency Parkway.
May I read a quick prepared statement?
Sure.
Boerseims strives to cooperate with the Omaha Police Department and we certainly emphasize with the burden they have regarding stolen property. The pawn unit is certainly a hardworking one. Boerseims has a secondhand dealer permit and, and on occasion purchased diamond and precious, precious metal jewelry for cash. In every instance where we purchase secondhand goods, we comply with the reporting to the pawn unit of the seller's name, address, date of birth, driver's license number, description of the property, and the money's paid. This current paper-based process, sorry, this is currently a paper-based process and we would certainly support an electronic reporting system provided such system appropriately preserved the privacy of the personal private information of our customers. Our objection, and this is a strong one, is the expansion of the reporting requirements to include traded property. Many jewelers, many jewelry retailers, including Boerseims, have a significant number of transactions that include trade-ins. A simple example of this practice would be our trade policy on diamond stud earrings. When a customer purchases a diamond, a pair of diamond stud earrings from Boerseims, they're allowed to trade those diamond studs back to us for the, for the amount that they paid to grow those diamonds into a bigger pair of diamond stud earrings. This is a generous benefit to our clients and a value add that encourages our customers to come back to Boerseims. What is important to understand about our jewelry trade-ins and those of other jewelry retailers is that we're accepting trade merchandise that we originally purchased and sold. This is not stolen property because we can confirm that we purchased the goods for resale and sold it to the very, very same customer who is trading this merchandise in. Over 85% of our trade-ins relate to merchandise that we originally, we originally sold. Secondly, a significant portion, portion of our, our sales with customers, sorry, a significant portion of our sales are with customers outside the state of Nebraska. As a practical matter, how would Boerseims comply with the fingerprint and photo from a customer not physically present in our store? This weekend, for example, we will serve over 27,000 Berkshire Hathaway shareholders who will hopefully leave our store with diamond jewelry that they may want to trade in someday. These new reporting requirements on trade goods would severely limit our ability to facilitate these future sales. Lastly, we cannot find any statistical or anecdotal evidence that relates stolen property to jewelry trade-ins. We don't find that people steal jewelry to come upgrade jewelry. If this ordinance is passed, Boerseims would be lining, lining up our best customers for photos and fingerprints in the back of the store because they elected to upgrade their diamond jewelry with one prominent Omaha business. This does not describe the kind of customer experience that Boerseims is known for that we want to give and we'd rather they not take their business elsewhere. We would support, we could support using technology for efficiencies, but only regulated property purchased for cash. Replacing the paper-based process with electronic filing would make this valuable data instantly accessible for law enforcement. We ask that you remove the traded goods wording from this proposal, from the proposed ordinance and ensure our customers' privacy with any selected third-party provider. Thank you.
Thank you. Did you have anything to add to that or? Okay, good.
Do you have questions?
She's the smart one.
If you have questions, if you have, okay, thank you. Are there any other opponents who wish to be heard?
My name's Mark Schmelzer. I'm the owner and president of Mark Edward Private Jewelry at 10525 Pacific Street. As my co, ex-co-workers from Boerseims pointed out, we do have some problematic issues with trade. I can't imagine the blowback from my good clients and some of your parents and friends when I ask them for their fingerprint for an item that was either purchased from me or purchased at Boerseims that's now being traded. I think it's problematic and unnecessary. We know who our clients are who are trading merchandise with us. This is not stolen product that's coming in our, our stores. It is just that, being traded for a new luxury item at a greater or more significant price point. I can't see a logical reason for a thief to trade an item and not get cash. I am all for all reporting with cash outright purchases. At the present time, I, I photocopy their driver's license, I write a description of the item, I actually photocopy the item to send to the pawn unit. We've done that for years in our industry. We would be very happy to fingerprint, which we haven't been required to do in the city of Omaha. And of course, online reporting would make it easier for all of us. But the trade issue is a problem for retail luxury jewelers. Also, the fact that we are classified the same as so many other used goods dealers in the city, I think is somewhat odd that we are classified the same as gamers buying a four or five dollar videotape or game, I guess. And also the fact that we've already carved out two, what I think are significant retailers of used goods, that being auction and antique dealers. I don't quite see what's the difference between a luxury jewelry retailer and let's say Collector's Choice who would have a case filled full of previously owned jewelry for sale, that they would not be required to use the same paperwork or electronic method that we retail jewelers would have to comply with. Any questions?
Oh, I think so. I think we're done.
Thank you.
They may call you, call you later after the public hearing. Thank you. Are there any other opponents who wish to be heard?
Good afternoon. My name's Chuck Fortina. I'm with Rockford Camera. 2909 South 169th Plaza. I was very happy to hear both of these companies get up in front of me because that's pretty much exactly what our position is on this ordinance. As I said in a letter that I sent out to all of you on the weekend, we are supportive of any endeavor to curtail crime and theft and get stolen items off the street and we want to be a part of that solution. We would be happy to report, electronically report all items that are purchased for cash in our store, but we feel like there needs to be a real distinction between the two transactions. A transaction that involves a trade-in and one that involves a cash purchase because they're just night and day in our business. Rockford Camera is not known as a secondhand camera store. As a matter of fact, it's a very small percentage of our business. But it, what it does, what allowing trade-ins does for us is to provide a path to purchase for our customers who started out maybe at an entry-level camera and as their skills and needs evolve, they, they want to trade in and trade up to better equipment. That is where the vast majority of our used equipment comes from, is from trade-ins from our existing customers. We know our customers very well and I can assure you that they will not go along with being photographed and fingerprinted when they want to trade in a camera. Fortunately, some of you are customers of mine and I, I would doubt that you would want me to fingerprint your, you or your spouse or your kids when they're trading in a camera. So, like I said, we want to be a part of the solution. We would be happy to comply with an electronic reporting. We just have issues with the, we would ask that the trade-in component be exempt. When I first heard about this, I started calling around other camera stores that, that I know in the Midwest and around the country. And of every one I reached, and one of them at least was using Leads Online, the ones that I reached that had an ordinance in place like this in their city, not one of them had to do it with a trade, when, when the transaction involved a trade-in. They were very surprised that we were even considering it. So, I would ask that, that that be removed from the, the expansion and we would cooperate with the electronic filing of cash purchases.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Are there any other opponents who wish to be heard?
I'm Samantha Bergman with Gunderson, 17255 Davenport Street, and I would just have to agree with my counterparts here. I think there is a big distinguishing difference between trade-in and, excuse me, and an outright cash. I agree. I agree that we definitely should and can report anything that we're doing a cash value for, but same thing with Borshimes. I mean, we do the, you buy a diamond from us and you, no matter what, get your same value back towards your next purchase. So, I just agree with everyone else.
Thank you. Are there any other opponents who wish to be heard?
Good afternoon. My name is Richard Messina, representing Play It Again Sports on eighty-four fifty-three West Center Road. I also would like to second the discussion about trade-in value for specifically my case would be golf clubs. A majority of our people are bringing in golf clubs to trade towards another set of golf clubs or individual unit. And again, a thief wouldn't be either accepting consignment or trade-in, they would want the cash. Something that hasn't been discussed here that is a big concern of mine is the use of leads online. Again, a third-party company taking in personal identifying information from our customers. I'm concerned about the security of it. I know that was testified to, however, we see it all the time with data breaches. If there's a data breach with this company, who's going to be liable? The customer's going to come to the store that collected their information. So, putting in people's digital signature, digital photograph, digital fingerprint is to me a high threat of personal identity theft and using that system, I think is a problematic one for the amount of time it would take. I've estimated the costs in manpower to be over ten thousand dollars for my small store alone in order to be compliant with the way it's written now, the number of purchases that we're doing, if it were to include trades, the amount of time it would take to, one, take that, we already take all their personal information from their driver's license, but to upload that as well as pictures and so forth on leads online, having to store it, bring it back out, it's a tremendous amount of administrative time and effort and cost that are applied on a small business. As we discussed, this is not being, and nor can it be, applied to internet transactions. A lot of thieves are using Craigslist, eBay, Letgo, all these other buy, sell, trade apps that aren't being governed. This, again, further puts brick-and-mortar stores at a competitive disadvantage to internet. Majority of my marketing doesn't go towards come shop at my store, it's come sell at my store or come trade in your used gear because I don't want to run out of used inventory. And when I, I'm going to start treating my customers like criminals in my store, I have a feeling that a lot of the moms that are trading in their kids' clubs or gentlemen that bought their clubs from me will be dissuaded from taking advantage of our services and will lose the lifeblood of my business, which is the used gear. I also do purchase used golf clubs from Callaway Pre-Owned and other legitimate online resources that I can, again, purchase at wholesale and sell on, sell at retail. Hopefully, that is also excluded because, again, there's, it's all legitimately purchased product that would just be cluttering the database with useless information because it's, we know it's not stolen and it's just more time and effort that the pawn shop will have to look through things that's going to be a waste of their time. Like others that have testified, we know our customers. The stuff that we're buying is legitimate. If it's not legitimate, if I know it's stolen, then I call the police to have them come arrest them in our store. If it's suspected to be stolen, there's clear tells, then we just pass on the used gear because I don't want to be associated with a pawn shop or the way, I don't want to have stolen goods in my inventory, even though it's merchandise that I'd love to have and try to sell. But we take every effort to avoid having that and if you ask the police the last time they found stolen goods in our store, it will be, it'd have been a very long time. We do cooperate with them to the maximum extent possible when we have things that we suspect to be stolen. And that's what I would appreciate is an opportunity, when we pass on something, I would appreciate the opportunity and a system to be able to identify that individual because we've collected all their personal information and the stuff that we think is stolen to them, but this is after the fact. This is not, this doesn't reduce the possibility of things being stolen, it's just they're going to find other places to sell it, again, on these faceless, you know, identity-less transactions that are happening outside the secondhand dealers. I'll leave it at that. Thank you for your time.
Are there any other opponents who wish to be heard?
We decided to come up together. We're both coin dealers. I'm Dave Peter. I own Coin Askers in Rockford Plaza.
My name is Tom Rubin. I've been in the coins and collectible business for sixty years here in Omaha, Nebraska. There are times I've had eight different stores.
Address, please. Yeah. Home address.
Twenty-six sixteen North One Hundred and Forty-Fifth Avenue.
Great. Thank you.
Well, I'll start. We're regulated as a financial institution under the Bank Secrecy Act. So, what this means is we have anti-money laundering compliance where we actually have to be compliant with banks and I actually have bank regulators that would come into my place of business and just see how I conduct a new business. And I had this similar ordinance in Council Bluffs when I was there. I was located there for two years. The reason why it was not in Nebraska was because we had seven percent sales tax in gold and silver. So, I've been in three states now. I actually started in Idaho, just getting around regulations like this. So, business goes where it's treated best. And what happened in Council Bluffs is they lumped me in with pawn shops. So, I was the only coin dealer over there. So, I actually went into the city, I joined the roadie, I talked to Matt Wash and Tom Hannafin, who's a former, and explained to him my position. Well, I do not agree with what John stated. Business left and went to Council Bluffs, or went over, when I was in Council Bluffs, went over to Omaha. So, I was there for two years and my numbers showed just last month, I almost bought as much as I did in Council Bluffs for two years, just in one month. So, business will go where it is treated best and that's what will happen for this law. And at the same point, too, both of our stores have been broken into. Tom's been broken into.
Over the years, I've been broken into twelve times.
I was broken into in two thousand and sixteen, wish there was no successful, you know, lead on being able to find him. We had blood, the guy cut himself on, with a hammer, come into my shop, we had blood. So, there's DNA evidence, did everything I could to work with the police, but I obviously knew there was really no money involved, we're not going to find him. And at the same point, too, what is the home successful burglary ratio in Omaha? Fifteen percent? The home successful burglary ratio in Omaha?
Much higher than the national.
Fifteen percent, would you say?
You have to address your comments.
Okay.
You have to address to the council.
Okay, I just wanted to get verification. So, the fact is, you have a fifteen percent roughly home successful burglary ratio in Omaha. So, you cannot solve eighty-five percent of home burglies and you expect us to be able to help solve that? It's just, that's unrealistic. It's just like Milton Friedman said, the government's solution to a problem is usually as bad as the problem. The solution here, this isn't going to work. The statistics and math show that. So, that's would be my stance on it.
Thank you.
You know, as a old-time dealer, we've always complied with all the state, federal laws and we've been successful in helping Omaha Police and FBI and Marshal Service in solving crimes that have occurred. But at the same time, the problem that we see here is we sell a lot of bullion. When I say bullion, we're talking about silver bullion, we're talking about gold bullion, we're talking about platinum bullion, we're talking about palladium bullion. It's all federally regulated. Our clientele does not want you or anyone else to know that they themselves are buying this bullion. We would strongly object to putting our purchases up on a public website with proprietary information. The same approach that the city has now actually did a settlement with the large metal dealers here in this area, including Alders, where they're happy and we'd be happy to provide that information to the Omaha Police Department, but we would not want to put that information up on a website where anyone could see it and our clients would be put at risk. It's a major concern. In Omaha, Nebraska, in the last twenty years, roughly thirty-five collectible stores have gone out of business. And the reason most of them have gone out of business is because of the changes in collecting habits. We're talking the internet. The internet, right now, eighty-five percent of all transactions in the collectibles area are on the internet, whether it be Craigslist, eBay, Amazon, makes no difference. Brick-and-mortar stores with their costs, our cost of operation, I don't care whose brick-and-mortar store it is, is at a certain percentage of what our sales are. And as those sales decline because of internet, we have to face reality and say, all right, we should be doing internet, we shouldn't be doing brick-and-mortar. If we just switch over to internet, we wouldn't have this question on anything here in town because you're not requiring any of the internet dealers, who are the majority of the dealers in this area, to comply with this regulation. So, you're not making a fair playing field for everyone involved. At the same time, there are twelve flea markets here in this area. And if you walk into any one of these flea markets and you look at all the merchandise that is sitting there, you would have to question where they got it all. Because it's, unless they're buying entire households of goods, and I don't know if they are or not, we buy collections. And a collection may have five hundred to five thousand items in it. The amount of effort that we would have to have to take a photo of each item, it would make more sense to us to just become an internet dealer. I would, I would hope that the reality is, if it's a fair playing field all across the board for everyone, we're happy to comply. If it's not a fair playing field, just as David has just said, we have to change our position, whether to move outside the city or to just go straightly, straight to the internet. And I hope the reality is that we can all work with each other on this, as we have for a lot of years, a lot of years. So, is there any questions I can answer concerning the type of business that we do?
I think you'll, I think you'll be called at some point if one of our council members has a question.
I just want to give you a couple of examples. So, this past Friday, I bought seventy-eight thousand dollars worth of currency. So, these are rare notes. These customers that came in even mentioned that this new law was going in place, they would not keep that collection here. So, you would have nice collections like this that would leave this state. And then to give you an example, I bought just in one transaction earlier this year, a hundred ounces of gold at one time. So, I would be required to hold that for fourteen days and I worked on about a one and a half percent margin. The customer would have sold these online, but I basically shaved him the shipping cost and just the ease of comfortability of not having to ship over a hundred thousand dollars off to an online dealer. That's why it's so important that bullion is exempt. We worked on such tight margins that people, it just makes sense for me to go online or do what I've done. I don't expect you guys to change, I just expect to try and use some rationality and some logic thought. If this does go through, I'll just go move my business to another state like I've done three times already.
It comes down to a large portion of the type of goods that we trade in are not identifiable. They're not identifiable. If I reach my pocket and I pull out a coin, anyone who has this coin in their pocket, it belongs to them. There's no serial numbers, there's nothing that identifies them. In every locate, every situation where people have been caught with stolen goods from our businesses, we have not been able to recover those goods because there was no means of identification. If you have a silver dollar in your hand, it's yours. If you have a gold coin in your hand, it's yours. If you have a silver bar in your hand, it's yours. But on the silver bar, maybe some of the manufacturers put a serial number. On most of them, they don't. So, it comes down to a question of identification. You know, we would all appreciate the fact that the Omaha Police Department does an extremely good job with the resources it has. And what it takes for them to do their job, I know I wouldn't want to do it, but we don't want to combat them. We, all we want to do is have some rational response to the type of goods that we buy and sell. And we're more than happy to work with them or anyone else. If you look back in the late seventies, I helped write the original secondhand goods law. And as far as I knew, it's been very successful over the years. I'm surprised to hear that it hasn't. But the biggest problem that any dealer in high-end goods will have is holding it for a period of fifteen to thirty days when our margins may only be one to one and a half percent. And that market changes daily. We buy it today, we sell it today.
Okay. Thank you.
Thanks for listening, guys.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Are there any other opponents who wish to be heard?
My name is Del Noza and I would like to...
Address, please.
Address is one five six forty-three Rosewood Street, number six, six eight one three six. I would like to talk from the consumer's standpoint, because I'm a consumer, and from the business's standpoint. I've been in the cell phone industry for about ten years now and we've been selling used merchandise, purchasing them, and also selling brand-new and purchasing them. So, first of all, I would like to talk about my rant as a consumer to keep my... So first of all, I would like to talk about my rant as a consumer to keep my privacy. If I own a phone for $300, let's say an iPhone 7 from Verizon, and later in a year, iPhone 8 comes out, then I should be free to go and trade in my phone for the current value that it has without compromising my privacy. Even police, when they stop, when they stop you, they do not take your fingerprint unless you do not have your ID on you. And even then, if you don't have your ID on you, they do not take your picture. Requiring that for something like an electronic device is unfair to me as a customer. I did not come to America to be policed this way. That's number one. Number two is every cell phone device that you guys probably have, all of you, is locked. You all have an ability to lock down your devices, whether it's Google Lock or an Apple Lock. Most devices are either Android or they're Apple. We all know that. So you have, as a consumer, as a reasonable consumer, you should be able to protect your own device without putting that burden on a business. If you lock a device, and you can check this everywhere you can go on eBay, the device that is locked loses 90% of its value. It does not become attractive to thieves. So if I, as a reasonable consumer, prevent that from happening, my device is not going to get stolen. Because a simple thing like this, if I lock my phone with a fingerprint, a simple thing like this will deter anybody. This means the person cannot get into my phone or resell it. Because for parts, this phone is $300 right now, for parts, this phone will be maybe $20. There's really no advantage of putting yourself through that for a $20 gain. Number three is, this will put minorities at a disadvantage. Imagine a single mother that has a child that wants milk, that finds an iPod that is just laying around and says, okay, so I got laid off from my job, I do not have my ID right now, I'm just going to go and trade in my iPod to make $20 for milk for my kid. Are we preventing them from doing this by implementing the strict ID policies and taking fingerprints and pretty much policing them, what they have? We as consumers have a right to own what we have and to do what we can with it. If we want to sell it, we should be free to sell it. And I do not want my fingerprint, I do not want my picture to be taken. What is the next step after this? Are we going to collect DNA samples or blood samples? No, we're not going to do that. $700,000 that you saved from 2015 cannot be the price for putting privacy in jeopardy like this. We just cannot. As a business, we will have a responsibility to secure our Wi-Fi connection, to get better throughput for internet, because all the images are going to be heavy, all of those megapixels are going to take traffic. So when you put that responsibility on a business, they have to upgrade all of their antiviruses, they have to upgrade all of their routers, they have to bring specialized techs to actually install those things. And those costs are not going to be paid. Yes, some of the costs will be paid, like, you know, specific machines that are being proposed, but not all other costs that are associated with it. We all know that data breaches happen. And data breaches are not, let's say Equifax got breached, but a simple thing like knowing a Wi-Fi password can actually make the criminals steal those fingerprints, steal those pictures. I have a little niece that is five years old, and I would hate for somebody to steal her information just because she wants to go in and trade some of her things. We already know that baby social securities are getting stolen, and we have no control over that. But now fingerprints and photos and photo IDs, it's just where are we going as a society just because we want to save 700,000 over two or three years? If you're going to put a price on privacy, it's better be a lot more than this. If police wants to cooperate, we have cooperated with police. To be honest with you, your police is not trained on understanding cell phones. They will call me and ask me a question about serial numbers, and as soon as you convert that serial number from the DEC number to a hex number, they get confused. They say, what is it? So instead of taking those measures and pretty much slapping businesses, let us help police. There are people like me who have been in this business for a long time, that understand specifics, how the phone gets activated, what is it that requires to lock it, we can help them, and it will be at a lower cost. We'll volunteer, we don't have to get paid for that. But if that's what it takes to keep my privacy, I'm willing to give you 60 hours of my volunteering time per week to save it. So that's why I'm opposing this rule. And I would really appreciate if you actually thought not just about passing something, but you thought about long-term consequences of this. Alright, thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other opponents who wish to be heard? Any more opponents? Public hearing is closed. Uh, did, well, before we close the public hearing, do you wish any rebuttal time? Yeah, do you, any of the, any, any of those in favor?
Todd Schmaler, Chief of Police, 505 South 15th. Look, we just want everybody to know, we're, we're not in opposition to anybody here, okay? We, we're just up here trying to support an ordinance that will help us address the property crime issue in Omaha. We also, if you recall, one of the first and last comments that I said is we stand willing to work with everybody and how do we get this going, okay? So I just want everybody to know the Police Department is not against any business. Matter of fact, we like you and respect you and we appreciate your comments. Thank you.
Thank you. With that, we close the public hearing. Mr. Festus.
Thanks, Mr. President. I do want to thank the chief for being here and spending his time with us. I think that is an indication of how important he thinks this is for property crime in the city, as well as the work group has, who has been working on this ordinance together, law, the PON units, and prosecutors who are here and can help answer additional questions the council may have. I also want to thank those that came to provide testimony, we do appreciate that. I think by function of you being here, you are upstanding business owners. And as the chief said, we want to make this work for everyone. And if there's a common theme I heard amongst all of you, it was the trade-in issue. And I understand that, and I want to come back to that here in a minute. But I want to talk a little bit about how we got here and the process to how we got to this point, just so we all kind of have that background, maybe observe a couple of issues before. I also want to hear from my other, my other council members about what questions they may have. And that was, as was alluded to when we started, the original efforts to engage electronic reporting to address property crime and stolen, and returning stolen property to the rightful owners was in 2015. And at that time, it was a rash of burglaries and thefts throughout the city, but I had some hotspots in my district for sure that led to a pretty large meeting of property crime victims who were demanding action and wanting to see the city do something to address this issue. So I believe the chief when he says that this isn't so much about what the police want, it's about what the public wants and what crime victims want, and they want responsiveness when these things happen. And I can tell you, after having those conversations with them and then also the PON unit and engaging them about what's a step forward on that issue, it was pretty clear to me there wasn't a lot of things we could do at the time to make that better, but for the ordinance we then decided to, to pursue. And part of the reason was incurred ordinance, as it applied to PON and salvage, there was a, a system that used postcards that were supposed to be taken each day, and they may or may not have included a fingerprint, and somebody was supposed to collect them every day, and nobody was doing that, and that was a unrealistic, unrealistic expectation anyway. So there was no accountability for, for those perpetrating those crimes and those then seeking restitution, them being the public. So we went about with assistance from Sergeant Genham and Lieutenant Deschler and others in, in terms of researching a possibilities used across the country. That led us to a Leeds Online software that we're going to talk about here today, but also the ordinance around that contract, which today's ordinance seeks to, to mirror and extend, because that ordinance has been very successful. As Lieutenant Deschler described, it's returned over $700,000 of stolen property to victims of crime in just two years, and led to dozens of arrests and approximately 170 cases a year that they're looking into in this respect. In fact, I'll embarrass her a little bit, but I'll note that Sergeant Genham received a ribbon of excellence from the department for her work on this and implementation of it, so I did want to recognize that as well. But we knew, and we said at the time, we wanted to start slow because it was something new, and we did start slow, just with salvage and PON, because we knew, we wanted to see if it would work and see how that would be implemented. I also want to thank the, the PON stores for being here and their representation in this discussion, because as you may recall at the time, we had a very similar conversation to what we had here today before that was eventually approved unanimously, because there was concern about change and what it meant for the business. And I am pleased to hear John indicate that it has not been a barrier to his business. In fact, it's only approved as relationship with the Police Department, being an upstanding business owner himself as well. So that's what led us to where we are today. And because it was successful, we knew the other part of this potential market is secondhand dealers that the police commonly come across in stolen property situations. But we also knew a challenge would be secondhand dealers, as defined, is much more complicated than PON and salvage. And so we went about several months ago, creating a work group that was representative, at least, of secondhand dealers, realizing there's probably over 200 in the city. So it wasn't really feasible to, to have everybody in the same room, but we tried to get sampling to review some draft ordinances and talk about potential issues that we might have seen. And that included bike shops and some coin shops, electronics, precious metals, guns, jewelry, and, and used sporting goods. And we started by narrowing the definition of secondhand dealer because we wanted to make sure we were only impacting the things police and the public really need to have in something like this ordinance, or at least that they see commonly in their work every day. And we made some changes based on input from this group that I'll talk about here in a minute. But we had to be careful to remain consistent with state law and also to try and remain consistent with the current PON and salvage ordinances as they're a part of this picture. We also wanted to standardize current requirements, because right now, some are doing postcards, some aren't, some should be, and some are fingerprinting, some aren't. So it's, it's a very piecemeal operation and very difficult for police to, to engage and, and supervise. We wanted to make clear it wasn't applicable to nonprofits, that's not at all what we're trying to accomplish with this. But what it does do is it mirrors the requirements of the PON, the PON ordinance, requires basic point-of-service equipment to be installed, a subscription to Leeds Online, which the city pays for, and a 14-day hold period, which folks have mentioned, and I want to talk about that a little bit here in a minute, and then very specific items that the police feel they need to have to be responsive to the public. One item I would mention that did change as a part of our group discussion was initially the term sporting goods was in there. In conversation with Plating and Sports and others, they made very reasonable points that that, that was overly broad, that's not exactly what the police are trying to accomplish, it was probably impactful on the inventory they have, and we said, well, what, what do the police just, what do they need most out of that mix and only out of that mix? And the answer was golf clubs. From my perspective, that was a very reasonable change. There may be some other items that they sometimes encounter, but golf clubs by far are what they see stolen in the community in terms of used sporting goods. I'm told of a couple hundred at least a year. Those are very high-value items. We also want to be consistent with how we did PON previously, which is, should this pass, we give a long time period by which folks can comply and understand what the requirements are, so at, at minimum, this wouldn't start until January of 2019. So I'll observe just a couple of other items we talked about and then, and turn it over for others to have questions, but we did encounter the concern about cost, some percent, and that we did have, we had the same conversation with PON at the time. Sergeant Genham will tell you that the equipment needed to comply with this is less than $500, probably only $386, I think she said today, in terms of what they recommend. A single cashier can get this accomplished in almost any business. The Leeds Online service is free, it's a city subscription, we're doing it anyway, so the cost to the city would not increase as a result of this. So that is not a cost to business owners either. I, I do understand the argument about, you know, some feeling intrusiveness or not wanting to deal with it, I, I understand that. But I also understand that the police and the public feel pretty strongly about getting stolen property back when, when they are victims of crime. So we're trying to find a balance in there, and I would also observe that many secondhand dealers are already doing this, and PON is already doing this, so it is a bit of a fairness issue and a consistency issue. And I would also note that almost any of the, any of the businesses here, and most secondhand dealers also already have quite a bit of surveillance and taped footage and things of that happening in their businesses, so it's not like people aren't getting their picture taken already, I would observe, and I thought about even when I was walking into Walgreens the other day and saw the camera taking my picture. The 14-day hold period, that's a significant part of this, and we talked about that a lot. In fact, realizing that some would like to see a shorter period, we did talk with the Police Department about would it be realistic to shorten that timeframe whereby they still have the ability to check for stolen items and cross-reference police reports, but reduce the hold period for concerns anyone might have about 14 days versus 10 or, or fewer. And what we found was that was not something we could do, and were advised against by the Law Department based on state law, which indicates 14 days for secondhand dealers. That's why that did not change, even though we were willing to do that. Three other things quickly. Observations about online sales, I agree with that. That is, and I think police do see items for sale, stolen items for sale online. As Ms. Peters will also note, that's not something the city can regulate, but that is where some stolen property is sent. I think our Police Department is getting much more sophisticated about that as well. I know they do monitor that, but that, that is unable to be accommodated within this ordinance. And then occasionally we'll hear the perspective about, well, what about outside the city? This only covers the city limits because this is a city ordinance. And that's true. But Sergeant Genham can also tell you about how other cities surrounding Omaha and throughout the country have called her to say, wow, your, your PON or salvage ordinance is really working well, we want to strive to get there, this is where things are headed. I do think that's going to happen in the metro area, and I know she's had conversations with other communities, Council of Bellevue, that she can speak to if others would like. So the last thing I would just mention for now, and that's the trade-in issue that was brought up, and I am very interested in that, in that item. I do think it's a legitimate perspective being presented here amongst many businesses to say it's much more unlikely a stolen item is going to be brought in to be traded in and traded up. And I think that's true. I think police may, may provide a perspective that they still think that's important and are worried that might be a loophole. But I would say that, for one, I'm interested in that issue, and I think a potential exemption on that issue would resolve a lot of the, a lot of the comments we heard today and a lot of the downside we heard today from otherwise, from, from businesses otherwise, I think, would, would welcome this change and welcome being a partner with Omaha Police. So I want to ask Michelle Peters just one question, if she's available. I see her.
Michelle Peters, Deputy City Attorney.
Thank you. And Michelle is in the City Law Department and helps draft the ordinance. We've had a bit of a conversation about this issue and lots of other issues along the way, so we appreciate your help with this draft, any potential amendments that might come out today. Should there be, should the body want to address the trade-in issue? That, that can be done.
Correct.
And it's, I'm, in my mind, it's a pretty simple change. It could be something as simple as, as I jotted down here in my piece of paper, that the regulated party or property in this ordinance shall not include items traded in for equal or greater value or stroke credit, or something like that, right?
I think that would pass legal muster, yes.
So it's pretty simple, like one line that could be inserted into, I think, the beginning section of this ordinance. So I just wanted to confirm that as a point of discussion going forward and note that that's something I'm interested in. Okay, thank you. And then I may have some more comments, but for now, I'll yield the floor to you other council members.
Thank you. Thank you. Mr. Harding.
Thank you, Mr. President. Let's see, first, I'll start out by saying I, obviously, I'm, I'm in favor of anything that provides law enforcement necessary tools to do their job. enforcement necessary tools to do their job because they have a very difficult job. And I think all the citizens do appreciate their hard work and efforts. However, I believe this expanded ordinance goes a little too far, especially as has been brought up a number of times today as it relates to trade-ins. And in a conversation I had with, with one of the groups that testified, it just so happens that this weekend coming up is the Berkshire Hathaway weekend here in Omaha. And I kind of, in jest, said, wouldn't it be kind of funny if this ordinance were in place and Bill Gates came into Borsheims with a couple baubles that he wanted to upgrade for his wife's anniversary, for their wedding anniversary? And you, you said, that'd be great, Mr. Gates. Here's the paperwork. Can I have your fingerprint? Can you give me your driver's license and can you sit down so we can take your mugshot? Obviously, in jest, but I think it does at least illustrate the point. And I think both Mark and Borsheims and Samantha, at least as it related to the jewelry, brought up great points. I mean, no one is coming in to trade an item and upgrading it. I mean, there's, that's, that's not what we're going to see. And the same thing, I've had the conversations with the Forteens and Rockford Camera. That's, that's not what we're seeing here. But then I also come around to the coin dealers, too. I mean, they, they talk about their, their thin margins that they operate on, and they also brought up the additional regulations that they have with state and federal banking regulations, but also the fact that they're, they're dealing in commodities, which, again, as they pointed out better than I can, are unidentifiable in many cases. And they're dealing in markets where not only are the markets shifting by the, by the day, but certainly by the hour and by the minute. And so that, that really puts at risk their livelihood. And again, I think, one of the questions I had is if, actually, maybe, Tom, if, just real quick, if you could come up. So just explain to me, I don't know. So explain to me, what's a typical transaction? I mean, you're not, you're not in the situation.
A typical transaction is a customer wants in the door. He has decided he wants to diversify his investments and include silver and gold bullion. If he was in any other country in the world, he would go to the National Bank or the post office. If you want to go to Canada and buy bullion, you go to the post office or the National Bank. If you want to go to a country in Europe and buy bullion, same situation. China makes no difference whether the country is. In this country, less than 4% of our population buys silver and gold. So we have a very small clientele. Our clientele wishes to remain anonymous because of what they are doing.
I understand that. But now, but typically, when they're doing a transaction with you, are they, are they trading in one currency for another or?
That happens on a regular basis. One of the things that happens is they have been buying one-ounce silvers, and they reach a point where they now have 20 of them, and they'd rather have two 10-ounce bars.
Okay.
We're happy to do that.
Okay. Thank you. So that's, that's all I have. But thank you, Tom. I appreciate it. I mean, so this is part of it. I think, too, we're finding out as we continue this conversation that there are, although, you know, the trade-in issue is obviously an issue, but to maybe another industry, another vendor, another merchant, such as, as the coin dealers, there are different issues. So it, it seems we're trying to come up with a solution here that's one size fits all. And I don't think that that's the right approach of how we are going to accomplish getting to a solution. And by the way, I think it's very commendable that every one of the people who have come up here today and testified against it, they're not just up here saying, we're against this, don't do it. I think to a person, everyone said, we don't agree with this, but here are some ways that we think we can work with the police department, with the city, and to make it a better system. So I think all the merchants and all those who testified in opposition, I appreciate the fact that that's, that's exactly the approach that you're taking because I think we will have to work forward together to get to a solution going forward. I think, too, we covered the, the trade-in, but also, one of the items that I think is of particular interest in my other job in, in commercial real estate, we, we see this every day in, in my industry. I mean, brick and mortar businesses are under tremendous pressure. And if we continue to put more regulations and burden our local brick and mortar businesses with, with, with those restrictions, it makes it harder for them to do business. And I think, you know, to go to a Craigslist or an eBay or Letgo or things of that nature, you know, that, that's where probably a lot of the business is going today anyway, because I think a lot of the merchants, again, who are here representing their businesses today, probably know their clientele, and they're not, the great majority of their business is not cash for, for an item that is being brought in, but it's rather for a trade-in. So I think we have a long ways to go before we find a solution. And I appreciate Mr. Festerston's willingness to be open to some of those suggestions. And I know today's not the vote, and maybe next week, when it does come to a vote, maybe we end up delaying it or laying it over so that we can continue to work on a solution that seems to make more sense. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Ms. Melton.
I won't repeat. I agree with everything that Councilman Harding just stated. I think that I, as a former prosecutor and somebody who's worked with victims, and I know especially victims of domestic violence, which I appreciate the fact that our police department does actively try and help victims who have their stuff, have their stuff stolen sometimes by, by the person that is harming them or threatens them to do it. I've also had family members that have directly been victims of property crimes, have their car stolen, their golf clubs stolen, and actually, I think they worked with you, played against sports. Without this, you actually worked with the police department to help look at recovering those or help capture whoever it was that ended up getting arrested for the crime. So I, I think a lot of these second-hand dealers, at least I know firsthand from people, have been working with the Omaha Police Department. My concern is that we may be going just a little too far with the fingerprints, requiring the fingerprints and picture for everything that we trade in. You know, and one example would be my mom takes my, you know, 11-year-old son in, who's been doing it for years. He takes his video game that he got for Christmas, and it's now nine months old, and he wants a new video game, and I'm not going to buy it, but maybe you take your old ones and go trade them in at Gamers or wherever you trade them in. And now, I don't know if the 10-year-old gets fingerprinted or grandma, who takes them there, is now going to get fingerprinted. So I mean, these are just some of the concerns that I think we have, that are we going to extend this to, you know, the $5 video games? I also find trade-ins, again, if we're going to do this to prevent crime and/or help victims locate their things and locate what's been stolen, we actually want to do that. And so by hurting, though, the vast majority of the people in this business, Borsheims and the trade-ins, I, I just don't think it's necessary. It's, it's very unnecessary. So I think what we're doing is we're going just a little too far. So I am encouraged that Councilman Festerston says he's going to consider the trade-in issue at this point. Most people trading in and trading off are not doing it with stolen merchandise. And so that makes me feel a little better. But I also think for the vast majority of the people out there, they just heard about this about a week ago. So although there was a committee that was convened to go over this, the majority of those 200 second-hand dealers were not a part of it and didn't have any knowledge of it. So I think it might be helpful if this was, I know the vote is next week, but maybe this gets laid over for a couple more weeks because I think, and Mr. Dean, thank you for coming down, because actually, I mean, I was, I was surprised to hear your testimony. I'm glad to hear your, your testimony, but it might give you the opportunity to work with some of the other second-hand dealers and actually come up with maybe a solution and some amendments that would work for everybody. If you would continue to be willing, I think you would be an excellent person to help do that with everybody here because you have used it, too, as well. So I, I also want to thank, ma'am, I didn't get your name when you initially said it. Could you step down here real quick just so that I can get it?
My name is Dil Noza, but I go by Dina in America to make it easy on everybody.
Okay. And Dina, what's your last name?
Azimova.
Can you spell that for me?
A-Z-I-M-O-V-A.
Okay. I just want to say that I was truly inspired by the fact that you took the time to come down here, number one, as a, as a, as a consumer and a user and also a business, a little bit of both. But you kind of gave your personal story, and you gave a take that we didn't hear today, kind of about personal liberty and how much are we going to give versus what we're getting from it. I wanted to just say thank you for sharing that. Thank you for sharing a little bit about your thoughts, feelings, story, and where you're coming from, because I do think this is something that very well makes people who are maybe selling second-hand items, the mom that just wants some, you know, is running low on food, lost her job, wants some money, and now we're making her feel like a criminal when she goes and to turn that, to, to trade in that iPad that she probably doesn't want to trade in anyway, but needs that extra money. And, and so I think there's some really good points that we really need to think about whether this is worth it to us. The amount of liberty and freedom that we're going to give up on this, is it worth what we're getting? I'm pretty sure if we all got GPSed with a chip in our arm, we'd all know exactly where everyone was when every crime was handled, and we could use that as an excuse to do that. Again, how far are we, how many liberties and freedoms are we going to give up in order to get an end result that we want? So you made an excellent point, and I didn't get your name, and I didn't want you to run out before I got that. And I did want to just say thank you for taking the time, and I thought that your argument is very thoughtful and inspirational, and I appreciate the fact. Thank you very much.
Thank you. There are no more lights. Let me make a couple of comments myself because I'm going to disagree a little bit with some of my colleagues because I do think, for example, when we're talking about moving an ordinance forward, what we try to do, or what ends up happening in most legislative bodies, is rather than hit a home run, a lot of times, if I can use an analogy from my vice president for a minute, we're trying to get to first base. We got the first base with the initial portion of the ordinance. Now what we're trying to do is potentially get to second base. We're not trying to hit a home run. And what these public hearings do is give us an opportunity to hear back from the public that may not have been in any of these committees or anything, you know, to hear about what's going on or how we're approaching this or what may be in or out. That's what these public hearings are for. And then we take those back, for example, as we, as you talked about, trade-ins. That's an issue that I had not heard until we heard it today. So it's a concern to me as well, and it would be something that I will be discussing with, you know, the sponsor of this legislation. But I think we can reach a compromise as far as that's concerned, or we can take it out altogether. You put together, Mr. Festerston, some language that, according to our attorney, we could potentially use right now if we wanted to. So I think that we can, we, as we look at this ordinance, I'm not sure that we have to lay it over or anything like that. I think what we need to do is listen and be prudent about what we do. And I think this council has done that over the extension of time that we have all been together, and I think we'll do that again this time. But I think what we're attempting to do in this particular instance, and what Mr. Festerston is trying to, is attempting to do, is to get us to second base. It is not to cure all. It is not the answer for anything. There may be some people like coin dealers that need to be exempt. We need to look at that, but I don't think we need two or three or four weeks to do that. I think we can do that in a reasonably short period of time. But understand how this works, ladies and gentlemen. What we try to do is get to first base. And if I can give you an analogy, we have noise ordinances. We have ordinances that address abandoned properties, but it wasn't enough, so we had to create an abandoned building ordinance to address that. We have issues with liquor establishments. We have the, the Liquor Control Commission, and we have other mechanisms, but it wasn't enough, so we had to do something else, like create a good neighbor ordinance so that we can address problem property, problem liquor establishments that don't want, that, that didn't want to do right. So now we've got that tool in place, and I think that's what we have here. And I think the potential is great that we can achieve great compromise here and maybe even have to, in some instances, like I said, with coin dealers, for example, we may have to look at that and exempt that till another time or maybe permanently. But understand that what we're trying to do is just get to second base on this, what I think Mr. Festerston is attempting to do. And if you want to, you can speak for yourself, but, you know, I, that's the way I look at how we do things and how government works, not only here, but how it works everywhere. We're not trying to hit a home run every time out. We're trying to get to first base, see how that works, and then get to second base, see how that works, and then on and on from there. So with that, I think we have the potential for a reasonable extension of the ordinance if we're, if we're willing to work together and seek to kind of compromise. And that's what happens when you have these public hearings. So I'm thankful for everybody that is here today. Quite frankly, Dean, I think we've already given up too much of our privacy. We did that a long time ago, and I don't think the Patriot Act helped, quite frankly. I'm just going to be honest with you. But with that, I think, I, I think there's some ways that we can go to get around this and, and continue to be effective in, in what we do, especially in helping police to solve property crimes. With that, I'll close. Mr. Pauls?
Thank you, Mr. President. You know, for a while there, I thought I was back down Lincoln because I was thoroughly enjoying all the give and take and the people talking to us, making us think a little bit. The one concern I have, using a baseball analogy, I don't want to move so fast that we do strike out. You know, I mean, I, I think we ought to really be serious about this because we are affecting people's lives. And what's bringing to point, a few days ago, I looked at my phone, and it says, they, they let me know that somebody had my information. Remember not too long ago, there was this group at Cambridge that collected information for the election? They said, well, you have, your information is out there. So that's a part that scares me a little bit, that we do lose part of that, that, that personal touch and somebody else is going to understand or know me better than I know myself. So I'm, I'm really concerned about that. And I'm just looking around in my district, all these buildings that are empty, even though it's not exactly my Oakview Mall, the one, the place I play against Sam's. There's several people out there. I know Aitken's, the grocery, the grocery store is closing down, right next door to you. With Canfield's, we, we have to be careful because we're, I'm afraid we're going to be losing some of this, and that's our tax dollar, since we currently don't take taxes from the interstate or internet, which we will, I'm sure. But show me how we can get the internet in here, and I'll tell you, I'll just be all over you.
Well, we're going to, we're, we'll let Mr. Palermo talk first, and then I'll respond a little bit. Mr. Palermo.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just also wanted to add, too, I wanted to thank the business owners again for being here. I know how important that is, and it shows that you care. Also, to the police department, especially the chief for being here, it shows that you care. And also to Councilman Festerston that he's open to at least review this, to find the right solution to where we can come. I appreciate that. It shows how much you care. And when I hear from my colleagues, I, I see it right down the middle, and then it goes to the luxury in life of having kids so I can sit back before they actually get a chip put in their body, and I get to think about, and I have a lot of kids, so I can pull out a whole bunch of different ages, but we'll just say.
He's love chips.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. We could say my eight-year-old, as she wants to upgrade from her iPad mini to her iPad, do I want her to be fingerprinted and have her mugshot? I think every parent would say absolutely not. So I see that side of it. But then I can look to my college-age kid who maybe has a necklace or a ring that's been passed down for generations and maybe it gets stolen somehow. And then, of course, I want to be 100% behind the police department to give them every resource possible to be able to. resource possible to be able to find that. So I do see both sides of it. I do appreciate that we're not voting today, so we have plenty of time, or at least some more time, to take a step back and hopefully make this work for everybody. Thank you.
Thank you. And to Mr. Pauls, real quick.
Take it all back.
No, he's not going to take it off. I agree with you about the brick and mortar issues that stores that are leaving and the concerns that you had. Those are legitimate concerns. I think the best way to do that, though, is a couple of things. One, the internet ought to be taxed. And two, I know it's not popular in this state, but among the things that we need to do is something you suggested a number of years ago, Mr. Pauls, and that's look at sales tactics. With that, Mr. Festerson.
Thanks. Just one last comment. I do appreciate this dialogue. I think it's really healthy and good as we try to find the right balance here between getting police the tools they're seeking to help property crime and to help victims of property crime. Let's don't forget about them in this conversation. But balance that with what we're all talking about here in terms of wanting our neighborhood businesses and small businesses to thrive throughout the city and have that strong relationship with the police and with others. One last comment I would make, Ms. Limas, could you come down for a minute? We had a nice conversation this morning. I just wanted to engage you for one second. You have to say your name and just address again for the record.
Okay. My name is Erin Limas and my home address is 8519 Hickory Street.
Limas, sorry, I pronounced that wrong. So as I understood from our conversation and from your previous testimony, the main issue from Borshams, as with many other companies here, is the trade-in issue. Does the language I mentioned, not to put you on the spot because you don't have to make a judgment right now, but does the language I described get to the main issue you're concerned about and could it address this issue for a company like Borshams?
Sure. So if we remove the traded goods as part of the regulated products, I suppose, then that would make the biggest difference for Borshams. And then also are somehow some assurance that the privacy issue with the third party, whichever one we choose, is addressed so that all of us who are providing our customer information can be sure that's safe.
Okay.
Right.
Great. Thank you. Well, I'll go on record as saying I for one will pursue that amendment and I'll ask that amendment be drafted tonight or tomorrow. And that's a one-sentence thing that's very easy to add to this for consideration next week or if that's in future weeks should the body decide how to handle that. And I will welcome other council members who may have additions they want to add or suggest to be considered in that respect, too. And then one last thing I would ask of Sergeant Jenham, maybe, I think she's here and hasn't spoken yet. Thank you. I would just give you a, maybe an opportunity to address the privacy issue if you want because I know you talked about that this morning with your interactions with Leeds Online. And then just anything else you'd like to add to the conversation today because you've, you're the main person doing the work here, so I thought I'd give you that opportunity.
Okay. As far as the privacy factor goes, I know that everybody is concerned, I'm sorry, Tina Jenham, Omaha Police Department, 505 South 15th Street. I know that everybody is concerned about the security issues. I will let you know that Leeds Online does go through a lot of third-party testing to make sure that nobody's information is sold. They've been in business since 2000, so they have 18 years of experience. I did contact somebody from Leeds Online the other day and they have not, they've never been sued from, they haven't been sued by anybody who said that their information was given out to a third-party entity. I think that's very important for you guys to note that. They have, they have what's called a SOC audit, which basically a third-party comes in, they audit them, they see if they have any weaknesses. They just, they just got through a NCSIGIS audit and they pass that. They go through the same thing that HIPAA does with hospitals. I would just tell you that we haven't had any problems so far with any sort of third-party information being sold out there. The only other thing I want to emphasize is we've heard a lot of people talk about fingerprints and if their children are going to get fingerprinted. I will let you know right now that in the city ordinance, it states that nobody can trade, so our pledge unless they're 18 years old. So there won't be any children being mugshot or being fingerprinted. And I also just want to tell you, people that were not in the group setting about fingerprints, I just want you to be aware that this isn't the old ink and press and get your fingers all messy type sort of thing. This is a digital fingerprint. We use it for prosecution purposes, for positive identification, so that way our city prosecutors can go ahead and prosecute those cases with a positive ID. And I can tell you right now with the way technology is going, I had a friend today who told me that when they went in to get a tan, that she had to give a fingerprint just to get a tan. So I don't think it's anything unusual or restrictive in saying, give your fingerprint to go ahead and sell this item just so it could help our prosecution out on that. I can tell you that we have been working a lot with Mr. Festerson with trying to make this proposal to where everybody's happy. I can tell you that we have surrounding agencies, Council Bluffs and Bellevue. I know that some of you think that this is really strict on what we're doing, where that we're asking a lot. I can tell you that we are right in line with our surrounding agencies. You have Bellevue and Council Bluffs, they ask for even more. They ask for two identifications. They ask for longer hold times. They are way more specific in the detailed description that you have to give to items. So if you're looking at what we're doing compared to our surrounding agencies, our cities, I'd like you to look towards them because we're not asking for more. We're asking just to keep up.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions?
Ms. Melton. Are you finished? I'm sorry, Mr. Festerson. Ms. Melton.
And that just brings up the one point which I forgot to bring up, that I think all businesses should be aware of and this isn't, I don't have this problem with the Omaha Police Department. They use Leeds Online. However, Leeds Online requires that each of the businesses enter into a contract and you will be required to enter this contract. I guess if you only do trade-ins and don't ever do any cash buys, then you'll be okay. But if you have to enter the contract with Leeds Online, the Business Participation Agreement under 4.9 states, this is what you have to agree to, subject to the terms of this agreement, reporting businesses hereby grants to Leeds Online a perpetual, irrevocable, unrestricted, non-exclusive, royalty-free license to use, copy, distribute, display, reproduce, transmit, modify, and otherwise use such data in accordance with and to the extent allowed by the terms of this agreement. Also, subject to the terms of this agreement, reporting businesses hereby waives all rights to any claim against Leeds Online for any alleged or actual infringements of any proprietary rights, rights of privacy and publicity, moral rights, I don't know what that really means, ownership rights and rights of attribution and connection with such data. So that's the term that you will have to enter into with Leeds Online. I really wish, because Leeds Online says that they don't misuse it, they don't enter into any of this, I don't understand why they just won't take that provision out. It just would make more sense. The last time we passed this ordinance, I asked Leeds Online to come, they didn't. They won't remove it. In the last ordinance, there were some salvage dealers that did make an agreement with Omaha Police to just provide their information directly to Omaha Police. I think if we were going to get into that, it would kind of probably, I'm guessing Omaha Police would say, no, thanks. The whole point of us doing this is because we want it to be all electronic and using Leeds Online. If you just provided directly to Omaha Police, it would create a lot more work. I know especially with, I think, the games from gamers and GameStop, they're taking in 400-plus games a week, probably played against sports would be the same. So I just think everybody should be aware of that. I know that the Omaha Police Department, at least they've told me, they wouldn't, they don't really care what the contract says and they'd be fine if that was taken out because it doesn't impact the Omaha Police Department. However, for some reason Leeds Online requires that it be in there and I would be very, very concerned if I was a business and had to enter into this contract and sign that. That's all, that's the point I just wanted to make. Thanks.
Thank you. Mr. Harding.
I'll try to be brief. Thank you, Ms. Melton, for bringing that up. That was another point that I wanted to make as well, too, and we discussed that in our meeting this morning. I'm sure there's probably similar language in, you know, your user agreement for, that you scroll through and just go to the bottom and say, I agree, when you're turning your phone on or when you signed up for Facebook or something of that nature. And we see how that's turned out in some of those cases. But I'll make one, one final comment that I think it's, it is kind of funny that we have to go through or proposing to go through all these procedures to sell a game or a phone or a camera and that we have to take your picture and your fingerprint and your ID, but we don't require any of that when we go to vote.
Mr. Festerson.
Two quick last things.
I'm sorry, you know, Mr. Harding. Okay, Mr. Festerson.
Mr. Danine, if you would, on that, on that particular item, I haven't heard of any of your operations or stores having a problem with Leeds Online or any concerns in the respect that was just described.
No, correct. We have not seen any, none of our customers have contacted us, said that their information was out. We do, on a given basis, with six stores, almost over 350 transactions in a day and so, and those are pretty much all different customers, so we have not seen any issues by any means.
Okay, thank you. And Ms. Peters, also because you addressed this issue this morning, too, you want to also chime in?
Yeah, I just, Michelle Peters, Deputy City Attorney. To clarify one point, I think there was a misstatement regarding the lawsuit with Alter and Sato, the salvage dealers. The agreement with them, although they are turning their information into the Omaha Police Department, it's with the understanding and belief and full knowledge that that information is going to be turned over to Leeds Online. So in that particular case, we have created that step that we're trying to get away from and what they're finding is sort of that be careful what you ask for because what they're finding is, is that it would have been much simpler and easier, and again, Mr. Danine can probably speak to this, when you upload those files to Leeds Online rather than having to go to the Omaha Police Department. And with all due respect to my colleagues at the Omaha Police Department, I do believe that the Leeds software is probably much more secure than any computer at the Omaha Police Department. But with that being said, those, those protocols they're finding would have been much simpler had they gone directly to Leeds rather than having to go through the Omaha Police Department and then try to convert those files into Leeds. So that's still a problem that they're working through.
Okay, thank you. And then the last thing I would say, I think I'm finally going to use this calendar that's sitting in front of me every week that we always kind of joke about. I think it is important to give enough time for other council members who may have ideas they want to submit or have discussed to have the ability to do that. I've committed to do an amendment on trade-in and I suspect that'll be successful given, I think everyone's interested in making this work for those that came to speak today. But I think this is also an important issue that we frequently make sure we have a full council deliberate and vote on eventually. A note was just passed to me that, which I had forgotten, that we will be down a member next week and I know the following week I will not be here out of town on work. So we can do it today or we can do it next week, but I would, I would suggest we also intend to lay over any final vote, at least until what would be two meetings from now then, which would be May 22nd, in which I think we do have a full body.
You making that a motion?
Yeah, I'll move that.
Second. Mr. Palermo seconded it. No further lights. It's been moved and seconded to lay over for three weeks till May 22nd. Roll call.
Harding. Melton. Pauls. Palermo. Festerson. Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed, six to zero.
That's just the vote.
Hearing's closed, right?
Public hearing's closed. It's just a vote.
Yep.
Item 39, a resolution to approve the 2017 Tax Enforcement Financing Annual Report for the City of Omaha.
Public hearing agenda, item number 39 is today. Proponents, please.
I want to first thank a few members of the Planning Department and the TIF Committee for giving me some good feedback as I work to put together the 2017 report as well as the larger report that has been given to you. And a special thanks to Debbie Hightower, who has helped me for several years manage the data and the approval of the documents or the documentation, so that's been helpful. And Kevin Carter was unofficially my editor-in-chief, so I had a lot of great help in putting this final report together, so I just wanted to give those acknowledgements. I've been with the program, TIF program, for eight years and now managing it. And as a result of a resolution that was passed by the City Council last August with the intent to provide an annual report of the TIF program, how it's progressing, I am going to present the first annual, very happy to present, the first annual TIF report. And it'll highlight the 2017 projects in the TIF program, which should be also thought of as a public-private partnership type program. There were 18 projects that were approved in 2018, or excuse me, 2017, and this map, which is also in the report, is just to kind of highlight the various areas where the 18 projects were located and the bubble, it's a bubble map, and it is also to indicate kind of the range of the amount of the TIF loan that was approved. So of the 18 projects, about 73% of those projects were residential, involve residential units. About 17 of them involve mixed-use type projects and 10% involve commercial-type projects. Half of those 18 were repurposed-type rehabilitation projects and the other half were new construction. About $45 million in principal of TIF loans were approved in 2017 and that was for an overall proposed investment in CRA, Community Redevelopment Areas in Omaha, of approximately $306 million. Quick highlights of some of the data points, there were about 1,582 apartment units that were a part of those projects that were approved, of which 150 involved households, low-income households, 18 single-family, four-cell units and at least 48,374 square feet of commercial space were a part of those projects. In terms of the areas where a lot of these projects were located, seven were in the midtown area, four each were in the North Omaha area and downtown area, two were in Exarban and one was approved in South Omaha. Also, the first page of your report, this kind of is a picture, if you can maybe zoom out, just kind of highlights, just to basically fill up this first page, a few of the projects that were approved. We know of the Landing, which now is known as the Landis, this is the former Creighton Medical Center, the World Hotel, which is now known as the Peregrine, a Curial Hotel at 18th and Douglas, the Hanscom Apartments, that involves two separate buildings, about 75 units, and it's these two apartment buildings for low-income housing households, the Niko Building, which is the former National Indemnity Building, the Bijou Residence, about, which is at 18th and Jackson, and that's a rehab, the Bohemia Cafe redevelopment, this is a rendering, that project is underway and it's probably going to be done this year, but it is underway, Cambria Suites Hotel, which is at the yard, which is in north downtown, about 15th and Mike Fahy, and then the Centerline Project, which is just southwest of the Exarban redevelopment project area. So just a few, a sampling of some of the projects that were approved last year. Oftentimes, yes, we do talk about all the new projects that come on board, but I also touched on 12 projects that, according to finance, were paid off in 2017. So while we approve so many projects each year, each year, there are projects that get paid off and that means those tax dollars come back on the tax roll. So what we have are about 12, or 12 projects total that came back on the roll and what that represents is an increase in the base property valuation of approximately $29 million, which is a 924% increase over a base of a little over $3.1 million. Those 12 projects also represented an increase in annual tax revenues of, annual tax revenues of $662,000. That's a 1,055% increase over the base tax revenue for those same 12 projects of about $63,000. Those, that information is in the report and that's just to demonstrate that, one, these pictures and as, as everyone goes out and they enjoy different parts of the Omaha area, they'll see, these projects are changing our landscape, they are changing our lives, how we live. our lives, how we live, how we interact with businesses. And it's also ultimately improving the tax base. So this basically says, this is how it improves that tax base. It increases the tax value, property tax values, and it increases the annual property tax revenue. That's all I'll say about the 2017 report. I just wanted to quickly touch on the larger report, that is not what this item number 39 is about, but just so that you'll know, both of this report, this 2017, and the larger report, will be on the TIF website, and is easily accessed if you go to the City Planning Department website. On the left-hand side are some tabs. Select Tax Increment Financing, and you'll be able to get to the Tax Increment Financing webpage. Right in the middle is where there will be archived documents, and these two reports will be there for the public to access. Give us about a week to make sure we can get it up there and out there appropriately. But the larger report looks at the last 17 years, and it was just easier to select and find data from 2000 to 2016. So the larger report covers that 17-year period. And the idea was, we know that there has been a lot of confusion about, well, what is TIF? How does it work? And how does it work in Omaha? So the report that I put together was designed to help the public understand, what is TIF? How does it work? It touches on a few best practices that Omaha does follow, and it does give you some numbers, and hopefully some nice pictures to look at before and after. With that, I will stop, and thank you for this opportunity.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, are there any opponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Mr. Harding?
Thanks, Mr. President. Having been a previous member of the TIF Committee, and on the Planning Board, and now on the City Council, I, too, want to echo Ms. Hadley's comments about thanking the city staff for the great work that they have done and do in putting these together. I also think we need to thank the developers. They put their capital at risk and invest in our city, and without having a tool such as TIF, I don't think we would see the level of commitment, the level of development, and how that moves our city forward. So I think we owe them a little bit of gratitude as well. Thanks.
Thank you.
If I may, I thank you for bringing that up. Yes, I touched on the public side, but the private side is very important. And I think the public does need to understand that the private side is putting capital at risk. Development is risky, and sometimes I don't know if the public really does understand that. So thank you for that.
Thank you. There are no further lights. Is there a motion? It's just a place on file.
It's a motion to approve and place on file.
Motion to approve?
And place on file.
Motion to approve and place on file. Yes.
There is a resolution included with this.
I didn't make the motion, though. Who made the motion? And you seconded it. Okay. It's been moved and seconded to approve item 39. No further lights. Roll call.
Harding.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Palermo.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Item 39 is approved, six to zero. Non-action items, items 40 through 55, do not require a public hearing or City Council consideration at this meeting, but will be placed on a future agenda for public hearing and/or vote. The reason for non-action is noted after the item on the agenda, as well as the date the item is expected to appear on agenda for consideration.
Motion to adjourn.
Second. Roll call.
Harding.
Yes.
Melton.
[laughing]
Pauls.
Yes.
Palermo.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed, six to zero. Meeting is adjourned at 3:53.